Okay, it's 5:30 and we'll call our meeting to order for the City Council for Monday, December the 10th. Jordan, roll call please.
Councilmember Bunsonis.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Slate Hansen.
Here.
Mayor Leibson.
Here.
Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll need a motion to approve last week's minutes, please.
Moved.
Second. Motion, Bunsonis, second by Slate Hansen. All those in favor of approving the minutes, if there are no changes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. This is your appointed time for open forum and we have a citizen here that wants to speak to us about, as it turns out, the next item on our agenda, Old Business Ordinance 181101. So as long as you're here and we're at the right place on the agenda, let's do that and tell us what you want us to hear.
Okay. Thanks for this opportunity to talk. I'm Scott Grebner and it's particularly regarding not being allowed to park on the grass next to the driveway. Reason for this is, in my house, I have that situation. Now, I keep my house up, I keep my yard up. In my situation, I want to replace my whole driveway and build a very large apron. That was on the, my plans this year, didn't occur. I had some larger, major medical bills and a few other things that took up my extra cash. But anyway, as I drive around town, I see that there's a lot of nice properties where they do the same thing. And I understand where we need policing of people's properties, but sometimes I look at this and I think there should be a little leniency on what we can do with our yards because I don't like parking, having my son park on the grass. It kills my grass and my wife really likes a well-manicured yard. But again, in my case, it's where, it's a very large investment and I think it's, I was told right around $11,000 for the apron and replace the portion of the driveway that I do. So I just think that when you start, begin to police these things, if this passes, that either leniency needs to be, needs to come into play, but if you ask the individual if they have a plan of action, if they're going to put an apron in. You know, I just bought a rental property where the people park in the backyard, they're parking on my grass and I don't have a parking pad there. At some point, I will, but at this point, they don't understand me when I'm telling them not to drive way up to the house. I want them in a certain spot, but it can be challenging for a lot of individuals and I have the ability to put the pad in next year, but there are people out there that don't have that ability. So I just want you to take that into consideration. Otherwise, I'm very happy with the city cleaning things up and as long as they stay away from my yard, so. Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification, did you, you mentioned cars and RVs. Do you think the ordinance should be rewritten to make a distinction between those two?
Okay. My personal opinion first of all is, I'm buying some land, so I'll step forward now in a different position. I'm buying some land where I want to put a subdivision in and I don't want people parking outside. And if there was an RV, if I decide to allow that, I want the RV behind the front plane of the house. That's what I want. I want a parking pad there. And I don't want RVs in the driveway. I sell houses for a living. I don't like showing a house and there's a big RV in the driveway. I don't like the fact where today I drove around and I saw not far from my office building, in the pick, on a slab, there were two vehicles that were not drivable, clearly not drivable. I don't like seeing that. So my distinction would be, and it's hard because I, in my case, my son drives a nice pickup, it's just that I don't, he's parking on the grass. I don't want an RV sitting in the driveway, in front of the plane of the house. If the ordinance was written that I park my vehicle behind the front plane of the house, I'm actually okay with that, except for when they clean the streets, then I have to have my other vehicle off the street. We do park one, unfortunately, I have four vehicles in the household and I have a daughter that's going to start driving next year, so I'll have five vehicles in my household and I have a double-stall garage. So I'm kind of caught.
Okay.
And I think there's a few other people in Aberdeen that are kind of caught in a situation like mine.
We appreciate you coming in and we will get onto our agenda item and I'm sure that if any of the council members have taken what you say to heart, it'll come up in the conversation here as we go through it. So with that, we'll go to Old Business and to start the consideration of this, I would entertain a motion for second reading for ordinance 181101.
Moved.
Moved. Motion, Johnson, second by Remley, and I am informed that there are a number of amendments that will be proposed for this, so what I plan to do is our city attorney has one, Councilmember Ronain, I understand, has one, and Councilmember Olson has three. So we'll take them in that order and we'll start with our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The administration, after looking at the ordinance and in light of comments made by Lynn last time we took this up, is proposing a change to 26-118(c)(18), which is the newest provision. The administration is proposing that area be changed to area and that the language permeable or porous pavement or be submitted after the words other than "on a." So remember if you recall, Mr. Lander was visiting about the porous pavement, which allows for a grassy appearance lawn, but actually is allowed for hard surfaces. The administration would request that an amendment be made to the ordinance to allow the change that you see on the screen.
So moved.
Second. Motion, Rux, and second by Ronain, and for the changes just identified. Questions or comments on this suggestion? Lynn, this meets, meets obviously what you had in mind. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor of amending the ordinance to make that change, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. Ronain.
Actually, I had to ask Ron to help me because I don't have mine in front of me. So I would move the proposed amendment as shown on the screen.
Second.
Motion, Ronain, second by Bunsonis. Jordan, Ron?
You know, my theory here is if a nuisance is not visible to the public, it's not a nuisance. So if it is substantially obstructed, whether it's by a wall or a hedge or a fence, it's just not a nuisance and it's, there's just no reason for us to prohibit it. Brett emailed me last week and at first, he said that he was embarrassed that he never thought of adding this language to the proposed ordinance, which I liked. Then he emailed back and said, "But what do you do in the middle of the winter when all the leaves fall off the hedge?" And I suppose if that's the case, then maybe something isn't substantially obstructed and maybe we have a problem, but I think, you know, I think I could read the tea leaves and see how this council feels about this ordinance. I think this would be an improvement and I would appreciate it if we could build this in, even if this isn't a perfect improvement.
Comments or discussion on this proposed amendment?
I'm going to support it. I think it's appropriate. I think it's going to fall mostly on the corner lots, but I think it's a little flexibility in this ordinance, so I'll support it.
I agree. The hedge issue, I have confidence in our code enforcement people to treat that with a professional approach.
If something looks like a nuisance just because a hedge isn't there, it was probably a nuisance before.
Other questions, comments on this motion? If not, all in favor of making the changes as described, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Councilmember Olson, you have a lot of experience with all of this stuff, so appropriately, you've got some ideas.
Yes, I have several that, changes I would like to make. Since we're visiting this ordinance, my experience has shown that if we can make this as clear and as we can, it's much easier to enforce and for the public to understand.
Okay, we can see the language you want here on the screen. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Bunsonis, Jordan. Okay, Mike, go ahead and, any more?
I think it's self-explanatory. These, some of these were actually addressed, or maybe not. This one probably, I just wanted any other containers that are self-locking that could be closed on a child. I would like that inclusion.
More definition to the other container language.
Yep. But, Mike, is that overly inclusive? I mean, I'm thinking my kids, who are in their twenties, they don't have these toys anymore, but they used to have these little plastic toys that actually, you know, they were, I guess they were toy boxes and they would, they would jump in the toy boxes and the lid would come down, but it wouldn't lock. Is "closed" the word you want or do you want it closed so they can't escape? I get what you're suggesting and I think it's a terrific idea, but maybe it's a little bit too reaching.
Do we need to insert the word "self-locking" before "container"?
I think I had.
Or unopenable from the inside?
So, yeah, if I could interrupt, when that was initially proposed by Mike, he did use the phrase "self-locking." I got to thinking about it and I'll explain why I chose this language, was because it would depend on who's inside it. I mean, you may have a situation where it's not locked, but a child is unable to open it because the child is too small. And so I purposely steered Mike away from the "self-locking" language. If you're looking for other language that might be less inclusive than what we're seeing here, but not quite as much as the "self-locking" language, then I certainly think that would be a good idea, but I thought we should go the other direction for this purpose.
Is it significant enough for you to propose change in the language?
I can't think of what the word would be at this point, but.
You know, I think leaving it as is gives some discretion to the code enforcement. They're not going to really intrude on a property that doesn't have a serious potential liability. They'll just let it go and if it is serious, then they'll address it.
I think you're probably right, Alan, but how about, or a container that may be a danger to children? Does that get you where you want to go, Ron? I don't like it particularly, but it's.
It becomes a little more nebulous, doesn't it?
It's more nebulous. My concern was, again, if a small child, a very small child, was placed into a container that was shut, you may not know that the child is in there and that's the whole point. And whether it's locked or not, or the manner in which it's shut, you wouldn't know. If it has the ability to be closed on a child, then that, to me, is a danger right there.
Could be a, could be a small container, one kid could pick up and hit the other one with it. Would endanger them.
Giving ideas, Mike.
So that is, that is not a proposed amendment?
It is not.
Okay. Any other discussion then on the amendment as it reads? All those in favor of adopting that then, as it was presented, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries. Mike?
Okay, I'm going to again visit this, this language of disused. I just feel that it's misleading and confusing. I've talked to a few of my constituents and it's subject to a lot of interpretation, I believe, when our ordinance already clearly describes what violations are. Disused implies that something must have been used at one time. Well, an inoperable vehicle is not usable. It's inoperable and it's not allowed by the ordinance. Disused, disassembled bicycles?
Mike, my mistake, I should get a second for this. Second by Bunsonis, Jordan.
Go ahead.
And so I think it just implies, or gives the wrong impression. I just have never seen this language in all of the ordinances I use across the state and I just believe it, it's going to cause some problems. You know, enforcement people, whether police or code enforcement, there's a lot of discretion in their enforcement duties and to say that someone isn't using something when it could be used, I just, I just don't like that language.
This then generates changes where disused showed up elsewhere?
Correct, yeah, and I've identified on the screen, the motion is stated on, at top and it's in the legal language for insertion and deletion, but as you can see in the red line portion, this is, this would be the effect of the motion to delete the disused definition in 1- or 117, and then you can see the other areas where I had made the changes and those would be essentially reverted back to that language.
Okay. I have no problem with this either way and, Mike, one of the reasons we like you on the council is your experience with this and I'm going to defer to your opinion of this and I'll vote in favor. Questions or comments from the council on this change? If not, all those in favor of making the change, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries.
The next one I'm recommending is just some language within the ordinance. This particular one concerns household fixtures and furnishings. The original ordinance was found. Can you help me out here, Ron?
Are you looking at the screen, Mike?
So the original.
Okay, we're actually removing it from waste definition and putting it with the section that actually identifies appliances, fixtures, and furniture.
So it goes from C1 to where?
Three.
Do you, do I have a second? David, you second? Okay. More, Mike?
We have a section, and that is subsection 3, that identifies appliances, fixtures, and furniture that are not allowed in the open areas of your property. I feel that's the proper section where this should be identified and so I'm recommending that we move it from subsection 1 to subsection 3 under appliances, fixtures, and furnishings.
Brett, does that change your operation at all? Okay. Questions, comments on this one from the council? Being now, we've got a motion to make that change. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. So we're back to our main motion, possible second reading?
Actually, no, I think you.
Oh, you have one more, I'm sorry.
Can I ask one question about that?
Maybe a couple, Mayor.
One question, Mike, if I could. I noticed in your amendment that was on the, yeah, we still have the word "disused." So has that been changed by the prior amendment?
Correct, and I apologize, I wasn't sure what the status would that be, I just pulled it as it was. That language will be changed, yeah.
Go ahead, let me know when you're done, Mike. Okay. And the next one, my fourth motion, will be that in subsection 3, where it identifies appliances, fixtures, and furniture, as the ordinance is now, it includes lawn mowers, tillers, chainsaws, snow blowers, garden equipment. Those are not appliances, they're not fixtures, and they're not furniture. We have a section that does identify that and that is in subsection 5.
So you want to just eliminate this?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson, Jordan.
And so I will just be moving that to subsection 5 in the next amendment.
So that, the moving of it is not a part of this? We can do both with?
No, I think it's a little different.
Is it, the language is different then when it goes? Okay. All right, so this amendment that's been moved and seconded is just to delete the language you see in front of you. Questions on that? All in favor of that, then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Mike?
The next one is actually subsection 5. Where we're speaking of junk, inoperable, unlicensed vehicles, I propose to include machines, equipment, et cetera. And then in the language, when it talks of mechanical machines and motors, we include and yard and garden equipment, which suggests that they are inoperable or disassembled. And then in the last sentence, this subsection shall not apply to any motor vehicle, I would like to include, or salvage materials held in a solid fenced enclosure on a licensed premises.
We have a second for that. Bunsonis with the second, Jordan. Mike?
This, this just, I feel, is the appropriate place for these types of articles to be included in our ordinance. It's very easily understood and so that's what I'm recommending.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this proposal? All in favor of making that change, then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Mike?
Finally, Section 7. We have this ordinance that addresses combustible refuse and if you will look at subsection 13, it's also concerning combustible refuse. Trees, tree branches, grass, dead leaves, it's repetitive. I don't believe we need subsection 13. We should just include it with other combustible refuse, which it is.
Okay, so the motion and a second is to make the changes in, under 7, and delete 13?
Correct.
Okay. Brett, how's that with you?
It works. Does it also renumber the balance of the paragraphs?
Yes.
Questions or comments on this change?
I've also included in that, that other than in a combustible refuse container in the rear yard, which I think is important that we have.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I think these are good changes, Mike, and I appreciate them.
All those in favor of adding the language under 7 and deleting 13, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
I'm finished, Mayor.
All right.
Don't know, I just wanted to make sure with that, all of these, I have, I can provide those with the introductory language at top is the way it'll look in the minutes.
Obviously, we've made substantive changes to this, so we cannot qualify this as final adoption tonight. This will qualify as second reading and will return to the agenda, presume here, next week. Since we have made changes, we need to allow time for the public to respond to the changes if they wish. So that takes us back to the motion for second reading on the main motion covering the entire ordinance. Questions or comments on the proposal to adopt this for second reading?
Well, I want to thank Mike because I think, I think I was the only person who voted against this last week and disused was my biggest concern, you all heard that, and I really appreciate all of these changes and I will vote in favor this week.
Other comments? I think we owe our citizen who made the effort to come and talk to us tonight, if any of you have any responses or thoughts about what he had to say and what he wants us to consider. If not, fine, but if you do, that's an opportunity to.
I just have a question for Brett. If, let's say, he was parking on his grass and he came up and said, "Here's my plans, I want a concrete paved driveway, but I just can't do it this year," would code enforcement still work with him on it or, I mean, especially nights when street sweeping, you know, they have to remove the cars from the street anyway?
We would, just like we do anybody with anything else, as long as they give us a timeframe as to when they're going to comply in essence. We try and work with them on that, you know, because we understand sometimes the money isn't there, so we give them a little bit, little bit of extra time unless it is, you know, a huge eyesore. Then they don't get as much time as something that, you know, the neighborhood isn't complaining a lot about. And we try and work with people.
David?
So Brett, you're basically not seeking these things out, you're, usually it's a neighbor that's complaining about.
We take a lot of complaints, but we also do a lot of proactive as well.
Okay.
So if it, you know, if it's a nuisance and it falls under the nuisance ordinance, we'll stop and contact the owner about it.
Mike?
I like Mr. Grebner's comments too. You know, not everyone has an alley in their neighborhood. Most of our new additions do not have alleys nowadays and so consequently, you can't drive in the back and park in the backyard without having to drive between houses and so, you know, I don't, I like the idea of not parking on the grass in the front yard. I'm really in favor of that. I think that's very unsightly and we're all in favor of good landscaping practices, but in some neighborhoods, there's not a lot of alternatives because they just don't have that access. What the solution is, I don't know.
You know, I was going to say the same thing, Scott. I had, after our vote, two weeks ago, I guess, I did have a nice conversation with one of our code enforcement officers and he walked me through how this process works and how it works in different situations and I felt, I felt really comfortable that the staff up at that department are doing everything they can to work with people. They're, I mean, it's not their job to go out and be hardliners and that's not what we want. That's not why we're writing this ordinance. We don't want them just beating down people's doors and making life hard for the citizens. Our job is, as citizens of this community ourselves, is to make the community good for everyone. So I like your proposal and I, you know, I think that's something that Mr. Bill and his staff will take into consideration when they're working with folks.
I want to say one thing too, also addressing Scott, I really appreciate your comments and the thought behind them. I wanted to just make sure that anyone listening or residents understood that the one sentence that was addressing five vehicles was deleted, so that's no more, that's not part of the ordinance. So when your daughter gets going and you get that fifth car, all is well. And also, the intent is to prevent just parking in the front yard and so that front leading edge of the home is kind of the defining point and anything on the side or behind is okay. So I know that a lot of Facebook comments were concerning those two points and so I wanted to make sure that that was also understood. Yeah. And I think where the council is probably in unison, just gauging sentiments that we've shared and in our voting, is just the trend for more of the front yard parking. There's always a factor or a reason why people do it and we appreciate and understand that, but it is trending, I guess my observation in the south part of town in particular, at quite a, quite a rate. And some of us have lived in other communities where we've seen it become very common very quickly and so we're trying to just have a beautification clause there that really will, I think, make us a better, better-looking neighborhoods and fewer. and fewer of the complaints that come from neighbors.
I saw a property this weekend just driving around with about a dozen cars on it, front, side, and back. So we know where they are.
Just a final comment from me is that, you know, in the enforcement area of code enforcement, it's not so much that a car, you see a car parked on the grass. You look to see, is the grass growing underneath of that vehicle to suggest that it's been there for a long time? Or are there engraved tracks where someone is doing it consistently? I can promise you that during street sweeping and snow removal, people are going to park in their yards. They have to. But it's very temporary, very temporary. And code enforcement is probably not even going to get over there in time to see it actually happen because folks will move them right back out into the street.
Good point. Other questions, comments on the main motion for second reading? If not, Jordan, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bunsoness, Johnson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. On with our agenda, then. The other item in our old business is presented for second reading tonight in ordinance setting fees and charges for services by the city. Any changes in this from last week? We have a motion for final adoption.
Moved.
Second. Motion, Lunsman, and second by Olson. Questions on it? Roll call, please, Jordan.
Councilmember Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Only four items in our consent calendar tonight reaching city business, A through D.
Moved.
Motion, Ronain, and second by Remley. Questions on any of them? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
And oppose, no. Motion carries. Under new business ordinance, 181203, establishing the number of full-time positions, position titles, and fixing the bonds of city officials and employees. Anyone feel compelled to comment on this? Lynn?
I will, thank you. We're looking at 272 for full-time employees for year 2019. We added two employees over 2018. Those employees were the school resource officer. And in the end, the city will pay less than 50% of that total cost for that school resource officer that will go to the middle school. And then the additional position that was added was titled custodian, maintenance supervisor. And we found it was actually cheaper for us to go to a full-time employee versus continuing contracted services which we had been under for several years.
Good. Move. Second. Motion, Remley, and second by Ronain for first reading to approve this. Any questions?
You know, I have one, if I may, and maybe this is... I'm not sure if this is for Jordan or for Lynn. What's the purpose of the bond? A little bond like that, it's got to be...
That's a statutory requirement.
That's what I wondered.
Yeah.
To who, with whom? Who's the beneficiary of that bond? If there was an issue?
The city proper is the beneficiary. If somebody were to abscond or otherwise embezzle some funds.
So we pay the premium and we pay.
Yeah.
All right. They better keep it small for us to cover. Questions, comments on the motion? First reading, Jordan, please.
Councilmember Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is an ordinance supplementing the 2018 budget for various unanticipated projects, activities, and expenses. Comes from the finance office. Jordan, what do you have to say to us about this?
Well, these... There are numerous adjustments and supplements required for... to be passed in order to be compliant with codified law for having budget dollars available. If there are specific questions regarding any line item, I could help you. Otherwise, they're necessary for things like revenues from grants that didn't have expense budgeted in the calendar year.
Okay. Motion, Ronain, and second by Remley. You have the list in front of you. Questions on any of it? Roll call, please, Jordan, first reading.
Councilmember Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. And item C is also presented for first reading, ordinance 181205, relating to truck breaking. Mr. Ogerm, or Robin?
I think Ron did a real nice job of putting the description together. There's probably not a lot to be said, other than I think the DOT is looking for some consistency, community to community, and they are offering up that they will redo the signage for us if we comply with the consistency in it.
Moved. Second. Motion, Bunsoness, and second by Slate Hanson. I guess my own question on this is, do we ever give a ticket for this?
I do not recall a ticket for this. Certainly, if you're to drive around town, there's times you would hear, identify it, but...
How far out does that apply? Does that apply out to the one mile or the three mile?
It'd be the one mile.
Just one mile?
Yeah. I believe we get probably noise complaints sometimes that are related to this particular noise, but I can't recall a particular summons or warning ticket related to it, so...
Just curious.
They could spend maybe an hour on Melgar Road and catch a few.
South Fifth and Melgar.
Yep.
I was going to say out by the golf course, but that's out of the city limits, so a lot of soybeans.
Is that disturbing your golfing?
Hurts my game.
You never see a lot of truck tracks.
Did we get a motion on this, Jordan? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions on this? All those in favor, then, are... Roll call, please.
Councilmember Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is an agreement for amendment three with Clark Engineering for engineering services on the water treatment intake protection and for channel improvements.
All right. Originally, when we were putting in the project, things changed, and there was more requirements as far as the monitoring for the wetland we had to create. So this'll... There was extra fees involved because of that. And this will cover those extra fees. We're hoping that we'll be able to cut out two years of monitoring. This does include those extra two years in case they're needed.
Move to approve. Motion, Johnson, second by Remley. The amount is $20,750. Any questions, anyone? All in favor of approving that agreement, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thanks. Robin, the next one is for Third Avenue improvements.
Okay, this is the final pay request. We have a change order, negative amount of $4,484, and the final pay request, the amount of $63,306. The pay request basically pays for kind of the tail end work in covering retainage, so we're recommending approval of those.
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Rux, and second by Olson. Questions on it? Roll call to make the payment, please, Jordan.
Councilmember Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. What did I do with my second page? Lita, give me your second page. I lost. The next item is item F. Work on the 281 water main loop, payment for B&amp;B contracting. Robin?
This is pay request number two. It's in the amount of $147,220. They recently completed the boring underneath the railroad tracks. The pipe is pushed underneath and pretty much connected. In the next couple days, we will do the tie-in on Highway 12 that will put some folks out of water for probably a good four hours in order to get it tied in, and then water will be restored back at that time. So we recommend approval.
Moved.
Motion, Lunsman, and second by Ronain. The amount, $147,220. Any questions?
Councilmember Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness. Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is item G. Robin, traffic signal work.
This is the final pay request for the Second Street Signals. Final pay request with an amount of $2,390 to Ringenberg Electric. Basically, we're just paying out retainage at this time. We had a math error in their calculation, and so there was a discrepancy on what we should be paying them. The math was all corrected, and this is what we own, so...
Move approval. Motion, Ronain, second by Olson. Questions on this one, $2,390?
I just want to add that that's been a great improvement at that intersection.
Thank you. I agree. It's with it not being pre-timed like it was, where it was always... It seemed like the green was always the wrong direction when you showed up at the intersection. This has helped a lot, so thank you.
Very much. Any other questions or comments? If not, roll call for the payment. Jordan, please.
Councilmember Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Rich? See, we have four payment requests, all to Helms and Associates, so why don't you go through all four? We'll handle them all at once.
Okay. What I'm looking for tonight is possible approval to authorize city manager to sign off on these payments. We're going to be having a special board meeting Wednesday because we did not have a quorum. So these will be presented to the board on Wednesday.
So would this approval then be contingent on that board approval? Is that how that's handled? Moved. I'm sorry.
If the board... If the council wishes to address it that way, they could make the motion contingent on recommended approval from the airport board.
Okay. Move to approve all four payments contingent on approval with the airport board.
Second.
Motion, Johnson, second by Rux. Go ahead.
Okay. So the first one is going to be Helms and Associates for $472. This is for passenger loading... Passenger boarding bridge. And it's for the construction administration costs. And this is 90% federal, 5% state, 5% city. The next one is for our wildlife hazard assessment, and we're currently at the... We've had 10 of 12 visits. After the 12th visit, the certified airport wildlife biologist will write up a wildlife hazard analysis, and then we will develop our wildlife hazard management plan from that. City's portion of this is 5% as well. And the next one is the airport master plan. We're at 21% complete, and the airport layout plan is 1% complete. This will be 90% federal, 5% city, 5% state. And that's for Helms for $6,374. And the final one is design services for taxiway Charlie, complete reconstruction, and design service 4% complete currently. This is going to be 90% federal, 5% city, 5% state. And this invoice is for $5,972.
Move approval.
I think we did that.
We have.
Whatever.
Okay. Okay, we have motion and a second to approve all those payments. Any questions, anyone? Jordan?
Councilmember Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.